We're going to begin today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for May 9th, 2017. We have a quorum present, and then we have Councilman Jim Waring, who is here via telephone to participate in today's meeting. I'll start today's policy session by turning the members of the council and see if they have any information or follow-up requests. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last night, we brewed a nonpartisan lager at North Mountain Brewing Company, which is in District 3. The mayor was there, but we also had a guest from the county supervisor, Bill Gates. So, we had a great time. They hope to tap it at the beginning of summer, and hopefully some of the proceeds will go to the Phoenix Bike Squad in the Police Department. Also, we have our upcoming community chat, May 31st, and it will be at Thunderbird Arts Center, and our special guest will be from the Parks and Rec Department. That'll be 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, May 31st. Thunderbird Arts Center is near 9th Street and Grover's, 1106 East Grover's. And, if I can brag about one of our fellow colleagues here, one of our fellow council members, Danny. Congratulations. Danny's been recognized for a Sentinel Award by the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce for his leadership, especially in making our city very pro-business. And so, I want to congratulate you on that, Danny. That's a pretty prestigious award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And there's no evidence, Councilwoman Valenzuela, he paid you to say that?
I'm shocked. No, he didn't. I just, I think I'm proud, because it really does show leadership in the city of Phoenix, and especially with the chamber.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very kind. Other members of the council? Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. I first would like to start with the Outstanding Young Man and Young Woman Award. Two weeks ago, the annual awardees for District 4 for Outstanding Young Man and Young Woman Award were Douglas Bencomo from North High School and Maria Battle from Betty Fairfax. So, I really would like to congratulate them. Maria was selected as an overall Outstanding Young Woman of the Year Award. So, she was selected. So, that shows great leadership in District 4. We will be celebrating, it's called the Solano Properties Celebration, and those that live in the Solano neighborhood understand this situation. This is where we had two houses for over 20 years, holding the neighborhood hostage. And basically, we worked really hard in getting with everybody within the city, police, neighborhood housing, other departments in collaboration to make sure that these bad homes were closed or shut down. And so, I want to thank Lisa Hubbard, who has really been persistent and who knew how to work closely with the Police Department in making sure that our neighborhoods are safe. We had the Third World Bazaar last Saturday on 19th Avenue and Camelback, and it was a great event. It was great weather, surprisingly, for May, but we really enjoyed ourselves outside. The Friendly House Youth Fair was also last Saturday, and that was also very exciting. I was there with Councilwoman Gallego, and so, we had a great time. And then, we will be having a brown bag bake sale, February, I mean, February, Friday, May 19th, in the City Hall H.M., and I'm looking forward to having that brown bag discussion. On a, two other notes that are a little, are, one was, one is somber, and one is we're glad it happened. I want to first speak about the serial shooter. Yesterday, my colleagues and I and the city were elated to have caught the serial shooter. And I want to commend the Police Department, especially the detective area, and all those that were part of it, in particular, our community in reporting and seeing, calling silent witness and giving us some leads. So, I want to thank everybody that was a part of that. I want to especially thank the community, because we couldn't have done it without you, and all of us are very much feel safe in our city, and thanks to the men and women in our Police Department. And lastly, there was a leader that passed away. I don't think I can say this. Former CEO of Chicanos Policalesa. This is probably the first time I've actually have allowed it to think about it. It's been a trying. He is, will be lost. He was a mentor of mine from a very young age, and he is also known as the leader and the big dog, and he mentored many of us within the small varios of Phoenix. And it's a great loss for us within our community, but to know that he's mentored many of us and had, understand the commitment that we have for our community and that we'll continue the fight for, for, for the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for those kind words about Pete Garcia, the big dog, who was such a great leader in this community for over 40 years, as President and CEO of CPLC, Victoria Foundation, Vía del Sol, and so many others, and I know, a close personal friend of yours. And I also wanted to also say thank you for your comments about the Phoenix Police Department, who have made an arrest of the alleged serial shooter. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do to go through the trial, the due process proceedings, but incredible police work, going over 2,000 leads. That was good, old-fashioned police work that led to the arrest, and I know the community is feeling better today. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Valenzuela, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just also would like to just mention something about the arrest, or the announcement of the arrest, of the serial street shooter. Without repeating much of what has already been said, the community, it cannot be understated of just how much the community meant to this, to this particular case, and means to this case. One of the highlights, yesterday's press conference, and the entire press conference was a highlight, but one of the, in particular, one of the highlights was when the sergeant, the Public Information Officer, was asked if someone was going to collect the $75,000 reward money. And you remember how he responded? He said, "Well, they just call it silent witness, because it's silent." But he did confirm that silent witness will be paying out $75,000 for this case, which tells us that someone spoke up. Something that we worked really hard to do, is just to demonstrate the cooperation between our community leaders and our police officers and our clergy, and our business leaders, and so on and so forth. We worked together to show that this person's behavior is not indicative of who we are as a city, who we are as a people, who we are as a collection of neighborhoods, and no one was going to stand for it. And so, for that, you know, we should all feel safer, but we should also be hopeful, because we are a community that truly cares for one another, and that is, that's an example of what we were able to see with the cooperation, our community, to ultimately bring us closer to justice, especially for the families of the victims that we lost. And so, we'll continue to think of those families and to pray for our families, but it certainly is a good day for all of us. On April 26th, we had a very successful hour, Maryville Job Fair with the Department of Economic Security and Arizona at Work. We plan on doing this regularly throughout the district. We want to connect employers who do business in the district and throughout the city to connect with potential employees who are close by, and those who live within the district. So, we were able to, on this first one, we were able to bring in 14 employers to connect with more than 125 job seekers. It was a great turnout. It was, you know, it was more than inspiring to see, but we think that we're going to be moving the needle here when it comes to connecting employers with this workforce that we have in West Phoenix, Central and West Phoenix. I would like to thank Chancellor Dr. Maria Harper Marinick, who I think is just one of the greatest education leaders we have in our state. She invited me to deliver the keynote speech at the Maricopa Community College District Hispanic Convocation on Saturday night, and talk about it, and just, I was so inspired looking out, and we have several hundred graduates of our Community College District who are there for this convocation, and several thousand of their family members that were watching them and congratulating them, and it was, it was great to see, especially, you know, for our city and what it means for all of us. So, congratulations to all of the, all of the graduates of the Maricopa Community College District, and, and at every level. I mean, this graduating season, I have a nephew who's graduating at a public high school, and I have another nephew I'm very proud of. A couple of days, he'll graduate from ASU, and he'll become a school teacher in District 5 at the Washington Elementary School District with the Washington Elementary School District in the fall. So, Xavier, congratulations for graduating high school, and Matthew, congratulations. One of our newest school teachers for graduating from ASU. This past Saturday morning, it was, we had a busy Saturday, as we always do, in District 5. We celebrated the grand opening of the Maryville Farmers Market at El Osso Park. We will have that farmers market there every weekend throughout the month of May, part of June, and then again, starting up in the fall, and it's done through a grant from Mercy Maricopa. The partners are Double Up Food Box, Pinnacle Prevention, and Champions for Change. And, and I just want to thank all of you for making this happen. At El Osso Park, I especially would like to thank Stacy Champion from Champion PR, who's part of the glue that is putting all of this together, and thank you for everything that you're doing for our community, Stacy. Finally, on May 12th, I will be joining the friend and Corporation Commissioner, Andy Tobin. Together, we'll be speaking at a professional development day for Arizona State University students in two important graduate programs, Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Public Safety Leadership and Administration. Commissioner Tobin and I will be part of a panel pertaining to how elected officials work with administrators on issues of local hazard management, and we're looking forward to doing that, spending some time with Commissioner Tobin on this particular issue at Arizona State University, one of the country's largest universities, public universities. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Alkowsky, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank all those individuals that came out to the Latino Cultural Center Town Hall. We had three town halls. Turned out great, great turnout, and really thank the Arts Department for everything that they've done to make that possible. It's still time. If you want to have some input, there's a website, phoenix.gov art slash Latino Cultural Center, and we're still waiting for more input. All the input's going to be gathered together. We're going to have a report to the council, and let's see if we can create a cultural center here in the city of Phoenix, where about 40% of the population happens to be Latino. The other thing, too, is Dia de los Niños celebration that we had in conjunction with the zoo. It was incredible to see so many people at the Phoenix Zoo, just having some fun out there, and breaking piñatas, and just having a great time, and mariachis and all that. So, you know, I really want to thank the Phoenix Zoo and all the individuals that made that possible. It's become a tradition for our Dia de los Niños, the Day of the Children. So, thank you so much. And also, we partnered up with Food City on Dia de los Niños to do a bike rodeo, and it turned out to be a great success. So, thank you to Food City on 7th Avenue and McDowell for allowing you to use your parking lot and your mobile stage, and we created a big old feast out there, too, and handed out all kinds of toys and giveaways to kids, and at the same time, we're teaching people to be safe on their bikes. Also, I had the privilege, along with Thelda and Deborah Starks, to attend the P&amp;P Appreciation Luncheon. It was a great turnout. All of, it was incredible to see the police officers serving all those individuals that really volunteer on a daily basis to protect and serve their neighborhoods. They are getting served by the police officers, and even the police chief was out there serving with a smile and dancing away. And it was great to hear their stories and how they really support our police officers. And with that, you know, one of the things that we, that was really sad is on May 3rd, I attended the unveiling of the dedication plaque for Officer David Glasser, right off of about 49th Avenue and Baseline. And it's been a year since he passed away, and he was killed. And we had his family out here, and all of his partners on the force, and it was a great celebration of life. And with that celebration of life, since I've been on the council, there's been about eight individuals that have passed away, serving us, you know, as police officers and firefighters. So, I thought it was really important to come together and, and to honor those fallen police officers and firefighters. So, on Memorial Day, what we've created was an event, an event to keep the legacy of those men alive, and so far, we haven't had any women that have fallen in the line of duty, but it's all been close to 51 men that have done that. So, if you're available, it's going to be on the 26th of May, that's Friday, right, kicking off Memorial Day weekend. It's at Caesar Child's Park, 35th Avenue and Baseline. It's a great event. It's a, it's a family event. If you haven't been out there, it's, there's testimonies from fallen firefighters and police officers' families, and just to hear their pain, and actually, to hear the stories of the police officers and firefighters, that they weren't just individuals that put on a uniform. They were actually people that were involved in Little League Baseball and their church groups, and just to hear the stories of their loved ones is just amazing. So, if you're available, that's May 26th, from 5:00 to 9:00, there'll be a big fireworks show and all that. It's just incredible to support the families. And starting in about a week or so, from 7th Avenue to about 7th Street on Washington, and on Baseline, from 35th Avenue to 51st Avenue, we're going to have Heroes Lane, seven-foot banners with the fallen firefighters and police officers also. It's a way for us to all pay honor to these individuals. The other thing, too, is I'd like to thank all those individuals that were a part of the groundbreaking for Fries. I mean, the mayor was out there, and we had a great time, and we finally got a downtown grocery store, and it's just going to be amazing. All the individuals that I bumped into are saying, "You know, this is great, Councilman. I could just walk from work to grab some groceries, jump in the car and go home." So, they're really appreciative. We've been working on this for the last 10 years, and we finally got that grocery store. So, thank you to all those individuals that made this possible. Thank you to Fries for all their hard work. Also, just anybody who wants an update on the South Mountain 202, they're breaking ground, they're, it's moving fast, just keep up with our website, that there's meetings, there's road closures, and all the information's on the website. So, if you have any problems or any concerns, you can call our office, and we'll make sure to, to get somebody from the Loop 202 out to your house, or to make sure that they form a community meeting to inform you on everything that's going on out there. So, I just really want to thank you. And also, we had a, the final opening of the Marriott, right here, on, on Central and right off of Jefferson. You know, we have, it's been in the works for years. We've been able to preserve a historic building, and right behind it is a new building, but it's just great to see how we can combine the old with the new, and it's really working together with great developers and, and our city staff to make these projects, these wonderful projects happen. Now, we have two hotels in downtown Phoenix that is well-deserved, and we need, we need more. The other thing I just want to bring up is Pete Garcia. Pete Garcia was an icon in this community, a person that really changed the lives of many of us. I run a nonprofit organization, where I run a non-commercial radio station, and we've partnered up with, with Pete, but prior to that, working on his Chicano Leadership Camps and, and just teaching people about their culture and stuff. I mean, this cultural center, it would have been one of the dreams of Pete Garcia, you know, if we ever get it built. So, you know, he's formed the Victorian Foundation that is basically helping manage one of our parks, that back in 2010, we were looking at closing some of our services and actually some of our centers, and Pete's came to us and said, "You know, I'd like to keep Grant Park alive, and if there's anything that our, my new foundation could, can do to make it happen, we'll find the resources." Just let, don't close the gym, don't close the services, don't close the swimming pool." They've been with us, a great partner, and really reaching out. Every Christmas, the community comes out and they get bikes. I can't tell you how many hundreds of bikes they give out to all the poor kids in that neighborhood. So, you know, Pete, may his, may his soul rest in peace, and our prayers are out there to his family. The other thing, too, is just really quick, I'd just like to address something, Mayor, on this article that came out in the paper today about delaying the lobbyist hearing. You know, in the city council, I mean, and we have all kinds of subcommittees, and we have delays all the time. I mean, what we do is, we cancel meetings when there's just a couple items to listen to, because a lot of us have all kinds of busy schedules. So, if there's only one or two items, that's common practice. I mean, I've been, we had the Downtown Aviation Subcommittee canceled this week also for not having that many items on there. So, you know, it's a common practice. It's nothing that's, that's different or out of the...
Councilman Mag, I'm sorry, I just wanted to correct you. We didn't have a Downtown Aviation Subcommittee this week canceled.
I meant, in the month of April. Sorry about that. We did in the month of April, right?
Yes, and we had to this, this month.
Right. Thank you. So, in the month of April, we did cancel one. And then, in the month of April also, we canceled two policy meetings, on April 11th and April 25th. Basically, if this lobbyist's concern was so important, we should have brought it at that time during the policy, where I think that it should be addressed at the policy. So, my thing is, I think it's, in the future, I would like, Mayor, just to talk to myself or my colleagues, if you have a concern, and not go through the media. I think it's a cheap shot when you use the media to communicate and just write down the haul for me, right? So, thank you.
I thank you very much, Councilman Alkowsky. I very much look forward to a policy recommendation before your city council, so we can vote on putting teeth into our lobbyists' ordinance as soon as possible. So, I appreciate getting that specific recommendation at the next subcommittee, so we can get it before the full council ASAP. Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and some of us were at the Fallen Officer Memorial, the fifth annual, last week, and it's a very solemn experience to know that, you know, at least 38 police officers, well, 38 officers, left their home that morning and never came home. They left, saying goodbye to their family, to their children, and never came home. And I just think that that puts everything into perspective, and I think the thing that you're doing with the Heroes Lane, I forgot you did that, and I think that's just an amazingly great thing to do. You know, thanks for doing that. But I think, when you start looking at the serial shooter, and, you know, there are a lot of really evil people out there. There are people like that that are just innately evil. They're just scum. And the police officers, on a daily basis, every single day, protect our families. The reason you can walk down a street, the reason you can drive your car, the reason you can literally feel safe when you're going out in our streets in the city of Phoenix is because somebody in blue is there, and they know that somebody in blue is going to be there if anything were to happen. And I think the fallen officer thing puts everything into perspective. When you think of those families of their children, you know, one of the kids, you know, his son works over at Channel 10 now, and, but he was, I think, 16 at the time when his father was murdered. It was a murder. It wasn't killed. They were murdered. And to think of how much that must have affected his life, I mean, he's just an amazing person now, but if you think about it, how hard that had to have been on the family, how hard that had to be on him personally, and all the kids that have to deal with this. So, I'm glad you brought it up. I think it's great that we talk about the serial shooter and the great police job, but this happens every day on the streets of Phoenix, every single day. And last year, we saw nothing but criticism toward them. I'm hoping that that goes away this year. I pray for that. It's calmed down a lot. It's not criticism from the public. The public is very supportive of our police, insanely supportive of our police. It's just a few people that have a problem with them personally. It's nothing substantiated. It's literally about a few individuals in our community that have done nothing but provide bad situations for them. But, so, thanks for all you're doing on that Heroes Lane. Let me know when that's up again. I kind of missed part of it. When's it, when's it going to be back?
It's the 26th.
The 26th of May?
Right. You know, Sal, that story about that, that individual, his mother actually lives right off of Baseline Road, and she hunted me down at one of my son's Pop Warner's, yeah, Rick's, Pop Warner game, and she goes, "Where's this Alkowsky, Councilman Alkowsky?" I thought she was going to beat up on me, and she came and gave me a big old hug and said, "I got to tell you the story." My grandson kept on saying, "Grandpa's outside, grandpa's outside." And then she goes, "Yes, son, yes, yes, son, yes, son." She hugged him and said, "Maybe he was thinking of his grandfather that passed away." "No, no, no, he's outside, he's outside." So, he walked outside, and the banner was right in front of their house.
Oh, wow.
And she just wanted to thank me for keeping that legacy alive and stuff, and it's just those little stories that keep those legacies living.
Well, it puts into perspective that they're human beings, they're people. Thanks for sharing that. That's, that's another beautiful story. I mean, if you hear these stories, they're just, they're just incredible, and, you know, we should be thanking them on a daily basis, thanking them for protecting us, because that's what they do, the military, firefighters, police officers, in particular, in our city. They protect us on a daily basis, and I think it's a nice thing to do. The Schimer Arts Center has a Wine and Water Cooler with John Irwin, May 18th, between 6:00 and 8:30. They're also providing youth classes for summer, after-school art, they call it after-school art classes, Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., every Friday. Ceramic classes, April 28th through June 2nd. Workshops, they've got a figurative clay vessels, May 20th and June 3rd. And so, if you have any information, please contact my office at 602-262-7491. And then, another thing that the Parks Department's been working on, or working that they've been doing, I think it's a really neat idea, and I want to give a lot of credit to Parks for that, it's the Silent Sundays in South Mountain Park. It's just, no vehicular traffic, it's literally silent. There are places you can go in the park over there, got to go a little further west sometimes, but you don't even feel like you're in a large city. I mean, you're that well hidden back, and the fact that we're now being able to show people what it would be like to have like a true experience in our, you know, in our desert, in our park system, I think is fantastic. Lots of credit to the Parks Department, Ed, if you could, for doing something like that. I think it's very creative. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Councilman Gallego?
Thank you. I want to join Councilwoman Stark in congratulating Councilman Valenzuela for his Sentinel recognition. He is not Phoenix's only winner coming up at the Chamber of Commerce. The Arizona Advocate Award is, I'm sorry, the Phoenix Chamber of Commerce is going to Sky Harbor for their work as an economic engine, so the city of Phoenix will be well-represented. It actually feels a little bit like an awards week. On Friday, I'll get to join Vía del Sol in District 8 for the Mom of the Year Celebration, and Vice Mayor Pastore has won that recognition this year. Marshall Franklin will be recognized, so very much looking forward to that event, which will have new resonance for me this year. I also, it's graduation week. I had the pleasure of attending the University of Arizona College of Medicine's commencement ceremony, the first class of the College of Medicine's freestanding Phoenix campus. So, there are a lot of people in the city of Phoenix family who played a role in getting us to that milestone today, and it's a milestone for all of us, in addition to the hard-working students. A lot of members of the District 8 team are going to be graduating as well, and alumna, so congratulations to Eli Perez, who will graduate from Arizona State University. We also wanted to congratulate Kyle and Pooja, two master's students who have been assisting our office with our pediatric asthma and work on food security in District 8. They will also be graduating this week, and one graduate is here with us today. Want to welcome Daniel Perez, who will be graduating from high school and has been joining us for shadow today. He is related to several city of... us for shadow today. He is related to several City of Phoenix employees, and we are hopeful that maybe City of Phoenix will be in his future as well. So congratulations to you. Big milestones coming up. We are also, speaking of big milestones, celebrating fifty years this week of Booker T. Washington Early Childhood Education Center. Huge congratulations to them. And, uh, next week, the, the fun continues. Uh, we're gonna welcome Arizona Legal Women and Youth Services, otherwise known as Project Always, to District Eight for their youth and justice reception at the Virginia Piper Auditorium on Monday. And on Tuesday, we'll welcome Local First Arizona to our South Mountain Community for a Business Owners Mixer at the venue on the Grove, at the venue, at the Grove on Twenty-seventh Avenue between Vineyard and Baseline. Also wanted to congratulate Scoop Tacular on their seventh anniversary. And, um, congratulate our Chief Financial Officer and City Manager for the great results from their meetings with the ratings agencies. And congratulations on the upgrade on one of the ratings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? All right, now I'll turn it over, uh, to the Vice Mayor. Is there a call for an executive session?
There is. Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statute's second, section thirty-eight dash four-three-one point zero-two-point-eight meet in executive session on Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty seventeen, at one P.M. in the East Conference Room, twelfth floor of the Phoenix City Hall, two hundred West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There's no consent agenda today. Mr. City Manager, any reports from you today?
No, sir.
We'll move on to our one item on today's agenda. Uh, the item on today's agenda is the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen City Managers' Proposed Budget. To remind folks in the audience and viewers at home, um, our City Manager, oh, I don't know how many weeks ago now, a month and a half or so ago, made his initial recommendation to this council and the community for a proposed budget. We then had, I believe, sixteen or seventeen budget hearings throughout the city and took significant, uh, testimony for members of the public as to what they liked or didn't like and what changes they would like to make to the City Manager's proposed budget. Now is the time for our City Manager to prevent, present his revised budget as a result of the significant public, uh, testimony. This is not an action item here today. Uh, it's our opportunity to listen to what the City Manager is now proposing. We will be voting on this budget. What day, Mr. City Manager?
Two weeks, Mayor, May twenty-third.
On May twenty-third, the city council will be voting on our, uh, budget. We'll make the final decision on it. But today's the day for the City Manager to present his revised budget. So I'll now hand it over to Mr. Zirkler.
Mayor, thank you for that introduction. Uh, as you stated, the budget hearings are complete and our online comments are closed for this budget. And I want to thank you and the council members for hosting our hearings and attending them throughout the entire city. Uh, I also want to thank our city staff who attended all the hearings to listen and engage with our residents, the facility staff who opened our city facilities in the evening for those and provided a place. And I especially want to thank Budget and Research and Communications Office employees who staffed and prepared each budget hearing and prepared the minutes and the, the videos afterwards so everyone could, could see those. Uh, over three hundred residents contributed time, thought, and energy to comment on the trial budget. And the consistent themes we heard from the input included a desire to preserve our existing services, advocacy for increased hours at library facilities, concern about the number of police officers we have, the impact of homeless individuals on neighborhoods, the funding at, at Central Arizona Shelter Services for caseworkers, and the well-being of those individuals who are on the street worth of concern to people. Arts grants, particularly for youth, we had a first this year where we had youth come and perform at several of our hearings. Uh, and that was, that was a new thing for us. Also, arts maintenance was a subject of, of interest. Continued attention to youth job opportunities, uh, lots of discussion about street maintenance, pedestrian environment shade, and bike lanes, and always a desire for more parks, facilities everywhere in the city, and a depreciation for our park rangers. So the proposed budget, Mayor, as you said, takes into account the feedback. It allocates some more resources in the area mentioned. It's, uh, our best effort to follow your, uh, council and the community priorities to allocate our dollars to keep Phoenix safe, dynamic, and desirable. It's a, I would describe it as a conservative budget. It holds back several hundred thousand dollars in reserve as a head start on twenty-eight nineteen, twenty-eighteen nineteen, which we will talk about a little bit at the end. And it does, however, take some measured steps to address public safety, homelessness, infrastructure investment, and growth. Our Budget and Research Director, Jeff Barton, will quickly walk us through, uh, the budget, and then we'll answer any questions at the end.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As City Manager mentioned, today is not for action. We're simply here to give you an update, a recap on where we are in our budget process. Um, we'll start first and foremost with bringing everyone back up to speed, level-setting for those that did not get a chance to attend a budget hearing on what the trial budget was that we took out to the community. So when we talk about our operating budget, we're really talking about that day-to-day budget that provides for all those dynamic city services that Ed and, and many of you have talked about earlier in your, in your opening remarks. We're gonna talk about it in these three buckets, as we've done in the past. Special revenue, representing about thirty-four percent of our operating budget. The enterprise fund representing about thirty-five percent, and the general fund representing about thirty-one percent of the day-to-day operating budget. We'll start first with the special revenue fund. So the special revenue funds are those funds that are really largely constituted in these areas. Public transit, roughly representing mostly that transportation twenty-fifty fund, as well as in police and fire. We've got a significant number of state and federal grants, as well as those dedicated sales taxes that we've talked about as in-depth back in February, as well as housing, streets with the Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund, Planning and Development Services, N S D, and then the rest of our departments that have special revenues or restricted funds. So in the trial budget, in this particular category, the budget reflected significant improvements or additions in various areas. And we're gonna start, number one, with parks and recreation. So roughly almost two million dollars, one point nine, uh, in proposed additions, utilizing the Phoenix Parks and Preserve Initiative Fund, highlighting, again, twenty-two park rangers for both mountain preserves and flatland parks, as well as the funds and resources needed to operate two new dog parks at Reach Eleven and Deer Valley. Also, in Planning and Development Services, we had about three point three million dollars' worth of additions proposed in the trial budget, largely constituting twenty-seven new positions. Those positions were specifically added to focus on customer demands, specifically in the areas of zoning and plan review, as well as providing enhanced coordination and communication between the City of Phoenix, residents, and the development community. Finally, in this particular category, public transit additions, specifically using transportation twenty-fifty funds, roughly two point one million dollars in additions, highlighting the need to extend certain routes and increase frequency on bus routes that serve some of the busiest routes in the community. And those routes can be seen on the screen. Next, we'll slide over to the enterprise fund as we focus on additions that we were making in the trial budget or represented in the trial budget for the enterprise funds. Again, our enterprise funds consist of our Water Department, our Aviation Department, our Solid Waste Management Function, Phoenix Convention Center, and then all other departments. Aviation proposed roughly one point eight million dollars in proposed additions. Those additions included the following items: activating an Airport Command and Emergency Operations Center, adding a dedicated ambulance to the airport, and specifically this ambulance will also reduce response times in the community when not in need at the airport. And finally, implementing FAA-mandated Safety, Management, and Systems Protocol, specifically for risk management. The next items, solid waste, proposed about two point eight million dollars in proposed additions, highlighting the need to establish a solid waste apprenticeship program to ensure that solid waste has a, a good pipeline of, of future workforce as we look forward into the future. Also, expanding the solid waste safety program to ensure that our drivers and all of our solid waste employees are properly educated on, on good safety and, and sound procedures. And finally, adding one position to support the reimagined Phoenix Campaign and the forty percent diversion by twenty-twenty initiative. Next, we'll focus on the general fund. And this is where we spend majority of our time, and this is where the majority of our residents come to talk about. So that's roughly thirty-one percent of our total operating budget. In the general fund, this is what it primarily looks like. About seventy percent of our general fund budget goes to police and fire. Another ten percent roughly goes to parks. And then we have court and library at about five, about five percent combined. And you see I T S in the middle there, little, little under ten percent. They represent the support needed for all of our city departments to operate from an efficiency standpoint with technology. As we mentioned back on March twenty-first, and as we took this out to the, to the community during the budget hearings, we had about a one point nine million dollar general fund surplus. The proposed budget, as presented in the trial budget, reflected how we were gonna divvy up that one point nine million dollars. We started with adding sixteen positions to the Police Department, specifically Police Assistance. The thought behind this was that those, those positions would allow the police officers, sworn positions, to focus on more high priority things. And these positions would be able to focus on the lower-level administrative-type tasks and duties. Also, expanding homeless outreach in Human Services Department. This was done at no additional cost in the general fund because we were able to take additional, we were able to take positions that already existed, reallocate those dollars, and convert them into a contract that will allow Human Services to be a little more nimble as it pertains to homelessness outreach. Also, in library, we were converting some temporary security staff to permanent status, regular status, because we see a need there. And finally, taking some existing, uh, contractual dollars and converting those to part-time staff to expand youth programming, specifically in the areas of STEAM and STEM, also at no additional cost by reprioritizing existing funds. And finally, we, the remainder of our general fund surplus, six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, our recommendation was that we set that aside to deal with the potential shortfall in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. One other thing that I would highlight at this point in time also is that from a budget perspective, we also proposed that we reduce the property tax from two dollars and seventeen cents to two dollars and sixteen cents. So this is the fun part. So, again, many of us are still recovering from the seventeen community budget hearings that we had in the community. I wanna, I wanna personally thank each and every one of you for your participation, participation in that process. Um, we are one of the only cities of our size that actually engaged the community to that level from a budget perspective. And I constantly hear about that when, when we get calls from other cities doing best practices, studies, or research. So again, kudos to you for the active engagement that you have with our citizens to ensure that their voice is actually heard. During those budget hearings, as the City Manager mentioned, we had about three hundred residents come out to speak, to engage with us, to discuss with us our budget. We, uh, we actually received about two hundred and thirty public comments at those budget hearings. We received another hundred and fifteen comments via email and social media. We are still taking comments. Uh, so the timeframe has not closed for that. We will take those comments all year, to be honest with you. Um, and you can do that through email at budget dot research at phoenix.gov. You can call six oh two, two six two, forty-eight hundred, or you can use the, the Twitter handle, hashtag Phoenix Budget. What did we hear at the community budget hearings? Again, we heard large support for preserving existing city services. We also heard from various and assundry citizen groups and constituent groups asking for increased funding for a variety of different things, such as li, increased library access and library hours, hiring of additional police officers, additional support for homelessness, additional arts and arts maintenance funding, additional youth programming, additional street maintenance and repair, parks funding, additional pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure funding, additional shade and tree master plan funding, additional community center hours, and additional funding for, for some senior center programming. So with that being said, we're now move on to what is now recommended as a result of the feedback that we heard at the community. Uh, we get into the portion now, the changes that our City Manager is making in regards to that input that we heard over the last couple of weeks at budget hearings. So again, we start with, our original general fund set aside was roughly six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. We continue, my staff continues to work with departments to evaluate opportunities to find additional resources. Through that exercise, we were able to find an additional sixty-six thousand dollars in, in resources. So our total available resources at this point in time is seven hundred and seven thousand dollars in the general fund. The proposal, at this point in time, the changes to the trial budget are as follows. Six, twenty-five thousand dollars additional funding for CAS. This will enable CAS to have additional funding to support the caseworkers, as you've heard many folks talk at the community budget hearings about their need for additional casework support, as well as additional, um, emergency shelter, uh, services funding. This brings them up to a level of about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in funding, their highest level since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight from the City of Phoenix. Additional arts grants funding. We heard constituent groups come and talk about the importance of arts and the value of arts, not just from our lives, our day-to-day lives, but also from the perspective of our youth. This twenty thousand dollars is specifically going for arts programming as it pertains to youth. Um, and this takes up, this takes arts funding, uh, programming up to about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's the highest level since fiscal year oh one, oh two. Also, fifteen thousand dollars additional for library materials, specifically online library materials. Again, trying to emphasize the fact that we need to live within our means. We understand that there's a need and a desire to have additional library hours, but having additional online materials available will also enable the library to serve additional constituents without actually incurring additional expense from operating expense. And finally, arts maintenance, arts grants maintenance funding of ten thousand dollars. This takes arts maintenance funding up to about eighty-four thousand dollars. It's a thirteen percent increase, and actually a fifty percent increase over the last two years. And now our revised general fund set aside, which started at about six hundred and forty-one thousand, is at six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And you can see we balanced to the seven hundred and seven thousand dollars that was available. Some additional information, um, again, we heard, we heard the need, we heard the desire for additional funding for youth programming and summer youth employment. So some additional information for you, as well as for those in the public and watching from home. Our Community Economic and Development Department has issued an RFP for a new career pathways and youth employment program. This will be a two-year program. Year one will focus on job readiness exercises, and year two will actually focus on, um, actual job experience. It's about, there's about three million dollars in federal funding available to bolster this program. And based on the estimates from C E D, they think they will be able to serve between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred youth through this program. We also heard, again, street maintenance, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, specifically infrastructure. So we want to highlight some things that are also reflected in the, in the operating budget, as well as the C I P. So in the Streets Department, the plan is to quadruple the number of street miles in the pavement preservation program. We also plan to replace more than twelve thousand linear feet of curb, gutter, and sidewalks, and also installing fifty-five bicycle lane miles, and a commitment to engage in a ten-year initiative to repaint all traffic signals at major intersections. Shade, we also heard residents talk about the importance of shade, especially as we live in the desert and trying to escape the sun. So again, tree and shade improvements that you'll see in the budget. About four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in total funding between A H R funds, the Arizona Highway User Revenue Funds, and Three P I, the Parks, the Phoenix Parks and Preserve Initiative funding. Um, this is to protect and replace the current city-owned tree-owned, or city-owned tree inventory. So when we lose trees, we will be able to replace those trees and not to see them go away. So that's really important as well. And finally, our commitment to police and fire hiring. As we've discussed since February, as we talked to you about our updated balancing plan for the specialty funds, we are balanced in all three of those dedicated sales tax funds, and we are watching them like a hawk to ensure that we do not ever go back to a, a negative situation. But again, our commitment in police is to get to three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sworn positions, filled sworn positions by the end of fiscal year eighteen nineteen. We do that by hiring two hundred and fifty-nine officers next year. We maintain that thirty-one twenty-five by hiring eighty-five in nineteen twenty, and additional ninety in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Those hires in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one are based on the known retirements. Any higher, any retirements over and above that, we will place those as well to maintain three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sworn. On the fire side, we are committed to maintaining one thousand six hundred and fifteen firefighters. We do that by hiring thirty-nine firefighters in fiscal year eighteen nineteen to replace those that are leaving through the drop program. And likewise, in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, we also plan to replace the known hire, the known retirements. The other thing that we will do with police and fire, we will continue to pursue all safer grants, all federal cops grants, all opportunities to hire additional, uh, police and firefighters. And we will continue to work with police and fire to ensure that those, those things become reality. So general fund status, again, just by way of comparison, current year budget, resources and expenditures, as we've mentioned many times before, we are required to have a balanced budget, both by state statute and city charter. Current year budget is roughly one point two-two billion dollars. Next year's budget is roughly one point two-seven-seven billion dollars. That's about a four and a half percent increase. That increase is largely driven, as we've, as we've discussed in the past, by pension. Pension is about a fifty-eight million dollar increase next year. So if you were to remove that, everything else is essentially reduced or, or relatively flat. Um, and with that, I'll turn it, actually, one more slide before I turn it back over to the City Manager. So where are we now in our process? Today, we're here May ninth with our proposed budget. As the City Manager mentioned, two weeks will come back on May twenty-third for action on this budget. Then we go through June, June seventh and June twenty-first with tentative budget adoption and final budget adoption. Those are legal steps that we have to go through, just another series of votes that follow the council budget decision on May twenty-third. And then on July sixth, you will vote yet one more time and adopt the property tax. And again, I want to emphasize that the property- And again, I want to emphasize that the property tax that we are proposing at this point in time is a property tax decrease from $2.17 to $2.16. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
So just looking ahead then, I know this has been a subject of discussion because we talked in, starting in February, about a five-year forecast where we looked ahead, uh, on, uh, particularly twenty eighteen nineteen. Due to the third year of our labor contracts and continued rising pensions, particularly in police and fire, we have a potential deficit that we have to manage towards in twenty eighteen nineteen. So as you know, we usually start the budget process in January, but because of this, these anticipated challenges, I've asked Jeff and Budget and Research to spend time this summer preparing options for discussion by the council in the fall. And we'll also review the impact of new state legislation that was just signed by the governor last week that allows a thirty-year amortization of the public safety pensions, uh, instead of a twenty-year period and what impact that has on our budget. Hopefully, that will be a positive impact. And finally, we had some feedback from residents who would like to take a deeper dive into understanding our budget and our budget process. And so we'll also work, um, with the council and with residents about a series of educational workshops on City Budgeting 101. Uh, so this budget represents the conclusion of one process in preparation for another. And, uh, for seventeen eighteen, however, we have preserved services and added some important things as we prepare for the future. So with that, Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions or take comments.
Thank you very much. Uh, first I'll turn, we have one card from a, uh, citizen. Our friend, former council member Craig Trippken, you've provided testimony on, uh, the city manager's revised recommendation. Great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, uh, to City Manager. Number one, I want to thank you for the additional funding for Central Arizona Shelter Services. We've been an important, uh, element and partner with the city, and the city's been an important partner to us for over thirty years, and we want to continue to be. I want to, I want to take my cat, well, let me first start by thanking, thanking Councilwoman Gallego and Pastor for helping us in the city of Mesa, where we actually succeeded in getting twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, out of the city when we were zeroed out initially. And they made calls out there and helped us. And I want to take my cat hat, CAS hat off for a second. I, I am largely a volunteer at CAS and, and, um, I want to speak briefly to the regional, uh, regional situation. Until we start successfully citing, uh, shelters, real shelters in other cities, uh, CAS is going to remain a vital part. And CAS's success in moving people and then moving out successfully is going to continue to be a vital part of addressing homelessness in this region. Homelessness is going to get worse. I, I believe strongly, I, that, that if you look at other cities, you look at LA and others, I think it's, it's going to continue to get worse. And I think that other cities need to understand that the perception of the city of Phoenix is the perception of them also. They sometimes think that they're not part of a regional, uh, city of Phoenix or Phoenix region. And, uh, I do think it's important, and I'd like to ask for the council help in, in, uh, helping us to continue to get not only support financially from other cities, but also physical, eh, physical, uh, sighting of other facilities in, in other cities. Uh, I appreciate this time. This is my only chance to get to talk to you all individually, or as a, as a group, and I, and I, I thank you for that, and I thank you for your support at CAS.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Trippken, uh, for your that, uh, testimony, and I had no idea that the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Gallego had that much power in Mesa, but that's, uh, good, good to learn. All right, metron members of council, any questions or comments? Again, this is not an action item here today. This is just the, uh, city manager revised proposed budget. We'll be voting on this item in two weeks. Vice Mayor.
Um, Jeff, my understanding is there is, uh, in the general fund, there's 1.9 million.
Correct.
Okay. And 1.3, is this, uh, one-time-only funding?
Um, at this point in time, councilwomen, I think no. I, I think, you know, the, the fact that we're actually allocating these dollars for exit, for some additional programming ongoing, they would lend themselves to ongoing, uh, to fund ongoing costs, which is why we made the recommendation that we did.
Okay, so this will then be embedded into the general fund?
Yes, the, for example, the 1.3 million dollars of the 1.9 that we're spending on the additional police assistance, those will be recurring costs. So our recommendation to add those positions kind of reflects the fact that we think that those dollars will be available going forward.
Just to add to that, we do say in the written report though, that these additions would be the first ones we would recommend to be examined if we had to cut services. So we would recommend next year that we start from this point, if we have to reduce the budget that we start here.
With the not, 1.9 million of the recommendations? So, okay, because I just want to get it on the record that, uh, with the recommendations of this year, uh, if we are in a deficit next year, which I think we will be, that these, these would be the items to be looked at first. And that includes, um, does that include, uh, civilianization?
Correct. So again, all, all of the additions that we're recommending today, that were recommended in the trial budget and recommended in the city manager's proposed budget, those items, if in fact we have a deficit for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, those items would be the first items that we look at, get, uh, as far as reductions to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So of course, it's always the council's prerogative, but that would be the first place we would say, is that still something we should be doing?
Right, because my point of view, and I've said this from the very beginning, is if we know we're going to be in a deficit, and there's 1.9 million, we should probably be holding the 1.9 million and, uh, preparing for the deficit. But in understanding the whole dynamics, I understand why we're doing what we're doing. And so I just want to be clear for everybody, um, because sometimes we're not, as to what this means. So that's, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Councilman Valenzuela, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, you know, first I want to, I want to say that there's some, some very good points in this budget, and I'm excited about it. Uh, we'll start with, uh, we'll start with, with public safety. Uh, I'll be brief, but I just want to bring up a couple of things here. The, the slide that says, uh, uh, police and fire hiring roadmap to twenty-one thirty-five. Uh, on the police side, meaning manpower, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five police officers. Roadmap for the fireside, one thousand six hundred and fifteen. Uh, the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, two hundred and fifty-nine new hires on the police side, thirty-nine on the fireside. Uh, I, I think we're, we're continuing to make strides. Ideally, we would, we would hire more if we're able to. I want to, uh, obviously, public safety is the number one priority of any government. I, I believe it should be our number one priority. I believe that, that it is our number one priority, but we have to continue, uh, continue down that path. If it's our number one priority, let's, you know, let's adopt the culture here and truly make it the safest city we can possibly make it, which means we need to, to hire more first responders and in particular, we need to hire more cops. And, uh, the budget also calls for sixteen civilian police assistants, which I'm absolutely supportive of. We're being innovative here. These are, uh, uh, police assistants. Two police assistants will be assigned to each of the seven precincts to respond to non-emergency calls for service and to complete other administrative duties, allowing sworn staff to focus on higher priority calls. I've done write-alongs. I think a lot of people have on, on the, uh, police side. And, uh, you know, some people are calling for what would be considered a non-emergency, uh, incident, and it's tying up our police officers more so than, than it really should be. And by the time our police officers finally get to that call, which could be a couple of hours or, or longer, two things are happening, you know, A, it, our officers realize this is a non-emergency call, and, and B, potentially taking that police officer even further away from that high priority call. Uh, so that's why that makes sense, and I think that that is innovative thinking at its best. Uh, and, and furthermore, if, you know, we can hire hundreds of police officers, which obviously we, we're going to do, uh, but if we don't have the support staff in place, then, then we're losing part of the efficiency there. I mean, if, if we don't have the, the people in place to support the police officers in the field, then, uh, well, we're, we're missing a major opportunity. So thank you for, uh, the innovative thinking. Uh, and we need to see more of that when it comes to, uh, every aspect of our, of our government, but I, I would really like seeing that on the public safety side, but that, you know, if we could do more, uh, then I, I really think we should on the first responder side. Specifically, uh, we need police officers. The, um, other thing that I will mention, well, before I get to the, the third thing, but, but I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to mix the sentiment here. This is a positive thing. I think, you know, we, we have a roadmap. It's where we need to go. I like the innovative thinking with the civilian, uh, police assistance. I think if we're able to hire more police officers, I think we should. So the other thing I would just, uh, mention, some of the, the, the funding that would go to the arts, go to, to CAS, for homeless outreach and so on. I, I think the positive investments for, for our city, and, and I really appreciate that as well. I want to bring up something that I would strongly recommend that I don't see in this budget, and something that I brought up in the past, and that is, uh, uh, making it easier for people who are engaged in, uh, city of Phoenix, um, elections, making it easier for them to vote. Uh, it's something that I talked about last year during the budget process, something I'm talking about this year during the budget process. I think the city of Phoenix is doing, ha- ha- has done a great job in comparison to other entities that we have here in the state, uh, and how we do it. I mean, we have, uh, three-day voting centers. We have universal voting centers so that someone with the ballot for a city election can go to the voting center nearest them, their home, their, their place of work, or city hall, or wherever the case might be. They don't have to go to the voting center that is, uh, closest to their, their residence. I think that's a plus. We're making it easier for people to get out and to participate in this democracy. Uh, so, you know, along with the three-day voting centers, uh, meaning, you know, that's how it currently is now, uh, three-day voting centers is not just, you know, Super Tuesday. Uh, it is, uh, Saturday previous. It's the Monday prior to that Super Tuesday, and then of course, Tuesday. You know, city of Phoenix is making it easier for people to, to participate in, in, in this democracy with three-day voting centers, and of course, the universal voting centers. What I would like to see are, uh, would, would be every, uh, registered voter in the city of Phoenix to, uh, to be on the permanent early voting list, also known as PEVEL. If, if you are a city of Phoenix voter, and if a city election were to come up, you should automatically get, as far as I'm concerned, you should get that, that ballot in the mail, which will encourage people to take part in this democracy. I think if everyone in the city of Phoenix voted, regardless of how people vote, regardless of party affiliation, it's not about a party affiliation, it's not about, you know, trying to get someone to vote a certain way. Obviously, that's up to the voter. But if we can make it a way where, where that voter opens up their mailbox and they see a, uh, you know, voting ballot that comes their way, that they can simply fill out and send in, uh, that's something that I would like to see, uh, in this budget. It's something that I advocated for last year. It's something that I have continued to advocate for, uh, throughout the year and, and while we, uh, are now are looking at adopting a budget here soon, it's something that I would strongly suggest that we do now uh, in this particular budget, and I will go and stop there.
I think Councilman, other members of the council? Councilman DeCecio, please.
Uh, thank you. And to Councilman Valenzuela's, uh, talk about, or talk about, uh, or, um, comments about turnout. I'd like to have the city manager look at every city in the valley and give us what their turnout numbers are for their city elections, uh, and compare them to the city of Phoenix. I mean, I'd like to have a report on that. That's something we could do pretty quickly. Um, second, when I hear about the budget, I mean, there are only two things I really hear about are police and streets. That's what I hear about coming from the public. They want to see more police on our streets. And they want to see our streets in better shape than they are today. So I'm going to take each one individually, because we talked about, you know, thirty-one twenty-five. How did we get to the number thirty-one twenty-five? What, now, was it financially driven, or was it literally process-driven, with said, we need to have this, these amount of officers to be able to fulfill all the functions that we need to get done?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the thirty-one twenty-five comes from the financial capacity we have from Proposition One, Proposition, Proposition 301, and the tax on the utilities, plus the general fund commitment, which has been growing, to the police department. So putting all those resources together, the carrying capacity of our current city budget as it stands today would be three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sworn police officers.
And I appreciate you looking at that way, but that's only one way. We got to look at the amount of officers that are on the streets or even within our department, you know, carrying multiple functions. Doesn't it just have to be on the streets? It could be the specialty squads that we've had for the fugitive detail warrant, you know, the warrant detail squad. Is there any thought about going out and, you know, comparing and seeing and working with the police department to have them come up with a number? You know, Chief Williams is an amazing individual, and she's very straight. I mean, she will tell you exactly how she feels about an issue, and I totally trust her. Is there any thought about going to the chief and saying, "Chief, what exactly is the number on your end of it?" At least then we can compare that and figure it out, what we need to, you know, where we need to move as a city. Um, I know members of PLE are talking about two and a half per thousand. I don't know what that number is until we know what it is that they need. I know right now we don't have enough officers. That we do know, and I think that's uniform up here. And it's uniform across the public in particular. Any thought about having the police department conduct a, you know, basically a study within their own department to figure out exactly how many officers we need?
Sure. I think there's a couple of ways to get at that.
Rather than financially.
Yeah, um, I think it's important, whatever we do, that we, we have the full context of it. So part of the reason why I've been talking about the thirty-one twenty-five is because the, this, there's, there's no way to really isolate the decision. So given the resources that we have today, and what we know is particularly the growth in pension costs for our police officers, unless we're prepared to talk about not doing some other things or raising revenue, that number is what we, we can afford, and it is, uh, one of the highest numbers we will have had of police officers in the city uh, since oh seven, oh eight. There's another way to get to it, which we did several years ago, which was we had an efficiency study and, and a group came in and they, they looked at how we staff. So the Berkshire group came in and said, if we allocated our resources on a different work schedule, we could actually have more resources on the street. So that would be as if we went to five, eight-hour days instead of four, ten-hour days as we currently do. That would free up some capacity that is universally disliked by our officers. They'd much prefer the four, ten-hour day, uh, schedule, and we heard that loud and clear when that report was done, and we, we said thank you very much to Berkshire. We implemented a bunch of stuff, but we didn't implement that one. So I think there's, there's different ways to get at what our staffing can be and how we can use our resources. And I'm, I'm certainly willing to do that if it's the council's wish, is to put, to put that out there. My only caution would be, it needs to be done in the full context of everything else we do.
And to that point, I wasn't going to bring this up till the end as the closing, but I might as well bring it up now because it's there. We're never going to really know what we need, even as a city, and I, you know, I've maintained from day one, we've got more than enough revenues in the city of Phoenix to handle what it is we're doing. Regardless of pension costs, regardless of, you know, saying that police represent sixty percent, their actual salaries and total compensation is really around forty-one percent. But I get the, the police cars and everything else you have to include in there. I understand that. But until we get to a true strategic, strategic plan, a, a rank ordering of functions from very top to bottom, I mean, and it's, 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 every business does this, whether you're a small copy shop or co- coffee shop or a, you know, UPS store, they always rank order and look at their functions. And they make determinations whether or not that's a function you want to be in or not, or if you decide you want to be in it, do you have to be the delivery of service on that? You know, when you look at our total compensation costs, it doesn't work. But there's plenty of money in our budget to do that, and it's fair to the public, and it's fair to the, the council members up here, and it's fair to everybody to be. To the public and it's fair to the, the council members up here and it's fair to everybody to be able to put that all out there. So, I've been maintaining this since two thousand and ten, that, you know, I, I know this year it's not gonna happen. But possibly next year, you know, and it's okay for us to start looking at functions of government, functions of what we do. And making those determinations, we can do that later, my biggest concern is if you look at what's been happening. Um, you know, at least the, you know, when we start talking about deficits and problems, we're, we're talking about raising revenues. In two thousand and ten, I started talking about how the property tax increase was coming our way. And that this was a manufactured situation, which it turned out to be true. Political bodies literally started shifting monies from capital funds, paying the debt. And then created the crisis and then raising property taxes, same thing is starting to happen today. You know, there's this move, I, I see it happening, next year we're gonna be having on the table. You know, another tax increase after many, many years of, you know, we've seen the, the transportation tax fee increases. Constantly happening in the last two years alone and until we get into this. Look at every one of our departments, every one of our functions, all the way down through a checkoff list, it's a real simple thing to do. Raytheon did it down in Tucson and they ended up saving millions of dollars, they ended up saving a big part of the company by doing something as, like that. So, I think we need to do that, the other part of it deals with, um, if I could, the streets function part of it. Um, but I don't, you know, I wanna close on this though too, with it comes to police. I think we need to have the police department give us an assessment what they believe they need. I think it's fair for us and it's fair for the public, I understand the financial aspect of it and I understand the multiple ways to get there. But I think we really need to get something from them, it may be two-five, it may be two-three, may. I'm sure it's more than one point seven eight that we're at now, or one point eight or whatever our number is today. Second, um, when it comes to streets, I like the language we use, we quadrupled the amount of, you know, preservation of our streets, but. Quadruple it compared to what? Um, how many miles do we need to have done at the city of Phoenix? I mean, how many, if we were to take an assessment, how many miles of streets are required, not required, but we would say, we, we gotta get that done. You don't know that right now.
I don't know that right now, but to answer your first question.
I see Ray back there, but he'll, he probably knows, but that's okay, we can, I can get that later, Ed.
Yeah, the, this, to answer the first part of your question, the street pavement preservation program. Was doing an average of a hundred and twenty miles per year.
Yeah.
Before, in, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen and last, in this current year we're in, twenty sixteen, seventeen. It stood four hundred and seventy miles and in seventeen eighteen, there will actually be more. Because we have, A, her funding, the highway user revenue, gas tax funding is going up a little bit. And uh, and allocating the transportation tax there, so we're actually able to grow it a little more for seventeen eighteen.
And I think that's a good thing, because if you look at the city's back east in particular. The one biggest complaint that they, you hear from cities from back east is their lack of infrastructure. I mean, look what happened in California, they did a fifty-two billion dollar tax increase in order to do that on gas, but. It's a matter of focus and the, and I'm glad we're moving in that direction, but it can't come fast enough. Um, if you're talking about economic development, quality of life, people drive on those streets and they just don't like, if you look at Camelback Indian School Road. Ray Road in my districts, those are three roads that I hear a lot of complaints about. Um, but I'd like to get an idea of how many streets are required, uh, how many miles of streets? We would say, you know, we would see as ne- in need of repair and how many we're moving toward and how we're gonna get to that goal. Um, the, let's see, I got that, going through my notes. Um. I wanted to keep it kinda short here because I know the bigger debate's gonna happen in a few weeks. Oh, we've had this in our subcommittee meeting on parks on a repeated basis. And it deals with the fifteen million dollars that were taken out of the parks, you know, basically the preservation fund. To pay off the, the golf debt. And I've talked to staff about this before, we just don't have a plan, I, I'm gonna put you on the spot on this. I'd like to get something in writing from you as to what that plan is gonna be. You know, what is it, it gonna, you know, when are we, when is any type of payment gonna be made on that? My concern is this, is that that was a, it was supposed to have been, we all, everybody. Well, except for the exception of one who wasn't here at the time, but essentially everybody here knew that that money is, those monies were gonna be paid back. And it's just not fair to the public who voted for that and the sense of transparency and being basically upfront with them. That they don't find a way or model to pay that back somehow, and I don't even know if it was completely legal at the time either, but it was done. You know, in order to help us go through a crisis, but now it's time to figure out how that's gonna be paid back. At least because that's what the voters had required us to do.
I think that's, no, I think that's a good question, I think it's really important. And, and I'll be happy to put it in writing, is to get down to the issue here is this, first of all, it was legal. What's important is to remember that golf courses are parks, they are part of the parks department, they are not separate. The open space represented by golf courses and the recreation opportunity represented by golf. Is in the same category as softball, swimming and soccer. What happened was, for about fifteen years, the general fund was actually loaning money to. The parks department for the golf courses. And what, when the fifteen million dollars was moved from three P I back to pay the general fund. That was a debt being repaid to the general fund, so the supposition is that. The debt that was repaid now needs to be repaid back the other direction and that is the policy call of the city council completely. But I think it's really important to have the fundamental understanding that parks includes golf courses. In terms of, of returning money back to three P I, there are really only a couple of o- options there, either we take money from something else. We don't do something else and we give it to three P I. Or one thing that, um, we suggested the parks director has, has talked about is. As we sell excess land in the parks department, that that money can be put back to three P I for that use. But I'd be happy to put that, that all in writing again, I, I know Councilwoman Pastor Subcommittee has been. Um, dealing with this issue and, and wrestling with the issue for a while, uh.
And, and or access property too, I think it's one of the things we've talked about is that. I mean, just what, what could we be doing and the other is if monies were, you know, handed back and forth on that, just an accounting of that. How much was there, was it fifteen million that, you know, exactly, well, I know that's how it was transferred, but if there were monies. That were remitted back to the general fund, it went, where the general fund was paying and subsidizing it over a period of time, what were those?
That was, that was precisely the number that was um, set forth in that two thousand and twelve or two thousand and thirteen action.
Well, what happened there and the reason we found out about it, I don't. I had one of the, one of my constituents come in and start telling me about it, none of us really had a clue that that was happening at the time. That there was that big of a debt, at the time I believe it was twenty-six million, I think it was, Jim Burke.
It was, it was, it fifteen, fifteen million in sum was the number that accumulated over that fifteen-year period.
Well, I, for some reason I remember it being in the twenties, when I talked to Jim, maybe it was in a preliminary conversation, but we found that out. Because a constituent came to me and started telling me that this is how, what was happening within the, the, the golf, you know, basically there was a debt there. And so we just started looking into that and that's how this whole thing transpired, so I have a personal interest in making sure this gets to its conclusion. And one of the conclusions is, it doesn't have to happen right away, because I don't see it happening right away. But we can dedicate some sale of property to pay that off, those are one-time funds to do that. Um, but at least some sort of plan, at least, at least some sort of direction of how we're going to do that, because that was a commitment. You know, and that's what the voters had expected at the time, thanks a lot, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, other members of the council, comments uh, on the proposed budget, Councilwoman Stark?
Uh, thank you, um, I really appreciate you addressing the issues of homeless and transient, there is. A growing population and I, I, I am very pleased that you looked at a way to fund. An RFP to bring some help to us and not cost us anything. And I, 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 I do appreciate you helping fund CAS. I wanna talk a little bit about the streets, so, um, I know, um, Sal, you're saying you wanna know how many miles. I, I guess my concern is, e- even if we had enough money to pay the thousand miles. Do we have the capacity as far as construction workers, people out there that can really repay and rebuild the roads, I just. I, I worry about that, I know I have a project that was supposed to begin about six months ago and it's just like. The contractors behind, they don't have enough workers and so, even if we have the money, how are we addressing that? I'm just kinda curious, maybe that's something Ray can speak to, but. Um, that does concern me, but I do hear that a lot, the streets, I can name. I drive Camelback, I would agree with you Sal on that one, but it, you know, there's a lot of other streets as well, but I just wonder. Even if we're getting revenues in, can we manage all these projects, is there a workforce out there for that? So I, I, I kinda be interested in that, cause I think that's really important. As we move forward to let the public know, even though we have the money, do we have the capacity? So, if we could look at that, I would appreciate that.
Will include that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, any other comments from members of the council? Councilwoman Guygo, please.
Thank you, I am uh, very supportive of the recommendation for the police assistance, I think it would be very valuable. We um, have certain areas of the district where we'll hear from people that they have a break-in at the home and have to wait for hours for someone to come. And that's the type of work, if a police assistant could go out there, it would bring great comfort to those individuals and free up our officers. Um, for work that requires a higher level of training, so I think that'll be particularly valuable in the Maryville Estrella precinct. I am still looking forward to the day when we can look at precinct boundaries again. I believe people would deserve the same level of service across the city and just because you're in one precinct does not mean you should have different. Substantively different response times and having a precinct in that area that is larger than the city of San Francisco. Is an unfair ask of our officers, so really looking forward to a day that, that we can address that. Um, wanted to thank uh, Councilman Trippken for the work on homelessness and for the recognition for Councilwoman, our Vice Mayor Pastor. Um, and, and the work with Mesa, uh, Councilman Ryan Winkle really stepped up and, and. Um, delivered in that area and we are working together with council members like myself who. Chair the subcommittee that oversees community development block grants, while we still have them. To see if we can't work collaboratively across the region on homelessness. One thing I think we at, at this, in this body really agree on is that Phoenix is not the social service provider for all of Maricopa County. And it was exciting to get a response from colleagues across uh, other cities that there might be ability to work together. We are all hearing about the importance of doing more for the homeless population and so maybe this is the year when things really come together and. We can do a more regional collaboration, certainly know it is not for lack of trying and no one has tried harder than Mayor Stanton, so hopefully we can. Provide support, um, and, and do more collaboratively so that this will, this budget process will be the beginning of something. Really important for investing um, across Maricopa County. I'm also very glad to see that we'll be making permanent positions, um, dealing with blight and vacant buildings. That's an issue that remains important to Council District Eight, when I visit my neighborhoods, it's pretty common for every neighborhood to have. A few buildings, uh, homes that are open and vacant and subject to vandalism, when I meet with our officers. Those are often hotspots we hear about, um, where just over and over again, break-ins, fires. Uh, an increase in, in drug usage, so that's a type of investment that I think will pay dividends and. It's been wonderful to watch increased revenue as well as we um. Get revenue related to the, the liens on those properties, so a win for our budget in addition to being a win for public safety. Generally, just wanted to talk about, it continues to be our priority in District Eight, that we look um, for ways to, to. Provide resources evenly across the city and not do, deploy resource based on complaints. We have a lot of folks who are very busy and we have neighborhoods where we're working very hard to set up neighborhood associations, but. The, the best organized neighborhoods um, should not get all the resources and when we're deploying. Good amenities, we oughta make sure that we do them across the city regardless of who is the loudest, but really look at. Every part of our city deserves shade trees, nice investments and amenities. And so the more we can move budgets away from complaint-based deployment of resources, the better from my perspective, thank you.
Thanks very much, any other comments from his council, Councilwoman Okowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor, first of all, I just wanna thank everyone that went out and testified and gave their opinions at the budget hearings. And one of the things that I heard is all the great programs we have in the city of Phoenix, from arts to our senior programs, to our youth programs. To all of our outreach, neighborhood services, graffiti programs, the list just goes on and on and on and on. And it talks about what a great city we are and it talks about what great employees that we have. In the, in the city of Phoenix, so I just really wanna thank our employees for making us all look good and making us all. That great city that we live in and one of the things I did hear is a lot about that we need more police officers out there. And one of the things I like to see is that, I know it's easy for us to sit here and say we need more cops, more cops, more cops. But I wanna see what it would take, if you can actually come up with some type of report, if we get to that two-point-five. What other resources, what other of those, all those amenities that I just talked about would be cut and how bad would they be cut? Also, um, if we didn't wanna cut those programs, what other options are out there? Cause I think we can sit up here and talk about needing more police officers, but how are we gonna get those resources or what programs? Are we gonna have to cut to get to that, whatever it is, if it's two. Two pers- um, two for every thousand, or if it's two-point, um, five for every thousand. And I think it's really important to find out what it is, if we, how many police officers we really do need. And seeing that we are a city like Kate was talking about, um, San Francisco fits in, um, either one of our districts, you know. It's so, our, we got about five hundred square miles of territory that our police officers have to cover. So, uh, taking that into consideration also, so I think that before we vote on a budget, we should know the realities. And if they, we have to start making some of those hard decisions, if we're gonna go that route of cutting programs. Then we need to, we need to, we need to start looking at that and if there's other options or other ways of getting resources. To hire those police officers, then we should know what our opinions, uh, what our options are and also, how can we start cutting that? The um, pension, I mean, how can we start paying off some of that pension that we have and, and start putting funding in that so in the future. Uh, that pension is not fifty or thirty million dollars that we have to pay off every year that we can start to decrease. Um, our pensions, um, that we owe, and that's really it, Mayor, so thank you to our staff. And thank you to all those individuals that went out there advocating for all the great programs.
All right, thank you very much, any other final comments by members of the uh, council on the proposed budget, Councilman Waring, are you still on the phone?
Yes, Mayor, no, I, I'm, I'm good, thank you though.
Okay, uh, so with that, we have no other cards from the uh, from the audience, we'll be back in two weeks. Uh, and this city council will take a vote on the proposed budget, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.